Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Can start the Jethan? Namah Om Vishnu Padayaya. Krishna Krishnaaya Phutale. Shrimate Bhaktive Dantak. Swamini Tine Namine. Namasthe Sarasvate Debe. Gauravani Pachari Ne. Nevisheshaa Shunyavadi. Ayo Sri Krishna Krishna. Ya Prabhu Nitha Nanda. Shri Ateta Hanathar. Shiva Sadhina Raghavinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
Hare Hare.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna. Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Nitaigaur Hari Bol Hari Bol. Hari Bol Nitaigaur Hari Bol. Nitaigaur Hari Bol Hari Bol. Hari Bol Nitaigaur Hari Bol. Jaya Jaya Kabupad Kabupad. Kabupad Jaya Jaya Kabupad. Jaya Jaya Kabupad Kabupad. Kabupad Jaya Jaya Kabupad. Jaya Jaya Gurubede Gurubede. Gurubede Jaya Jaya Gurubede. Nitaigaur Brahmanande Hari Bol Kabupad. Kichanandakoti Mishna Kichanandakoti. Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna and Pranamsi Devotees. So welcome to. Hare Krishna Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
So we heartily welcome. Aspatia Achapitivatan Maharaj. Lovely chanting. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Krishna Krishna.
Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Hare Rama.
Hare Krishna. How are you Maharaj?
It's going on, it's good. Now festival is coming. So we have. Yesterday we had the. We had the. Ponailam ceremony.
Oh, okay Maharaj.
Then soon. Going to be Aravita Acharya's appearance day. The Nityana Trishya. And it's going to be Varadhwara she. Is it's we have. Many things coming up. It's going to be busy and then. The Fron Festival.
Yes Maharaj.
And you are coming in April, right?
Yes Maharaj, we are coming in April. Ten, tenth to fourteenth of April Maharaj.
Yeah. You, you didn't plan to come for the festival?
But we didn't get rooms Maharaj.
How is it possible?
I don't know Maharaj.
They. They don't plan, they don't think that any of the Western devotees will come. So uh. It's only then Indian devotees will be here. But I didn't think that that many numbers will be here. That's sure.
They first told us no for April also Maharaj, I was so surprised. But Nima, we get rooms in a normal year also. So they said they told us in April also it is full. Only around ten days back they told us in April you can get rooms.
Yeah, so I, I don't know how, what the planning is. But if they have all the rooms booked for the festival, then it's going to be like normal. It's going to be full on. So let's see.
Yes, yes Maharaj, so.
How is in Delhi now? The weather is getting warmer?
Yes Maharaj, it is getting warmer now, afternoons are warm. And morning evening also not so cold now, so. Afternoon temperatures I think around twenty-five, twenty-six are hovering Maharaj.
Did you have freezing in, in Delhi?
No, no Maharaj.
Nothing yet? Bring down there was?
No Maharaj.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, well, Europe is suffering from freezing now. Russia.
Even America also Maharaj, I think very large snowstorm in America. I think millions of people are without electricity there.
That's crazy, there was a snow in Sahara Desert this year. Yeah. Also there are some like it, no. Irregularities in, in the weather, weather and everything. But somehow India is still doing quite okay.
Yes.
The moment still comes more or less on time. The, the seasons change more or less on time. You see the, the vasanta panchamay comes and then it starts getting warmer. Then autumn shasti comes and then starts getting cold. So no, that's good. It's still some piety is there.
Yes Maharaj, because the salus are here Maharaj, piety.
Ultimately, that's what it is now. They are trying to solve problems by, by some mechanical or some material means. But there is no solution to such problems. The only way how, how that can be solved is by spiritual means. But they are not catching it. Or even if they are, but that doesn't make money. So it's everything for the money. Like now the, the covid is there, so. Many people are making money of that. Now either making the masks or now vaccinations and all this. And they are talking about some billions of dollars what they are making.
Yes.
Anyway. And it's not even going to work probably for a long time because the new strains will come and is that. It's just another disease extra and just have people to worry. So.
Yesterday Maharaj, somebody was saying, some senior devotee, he said that. In this covid magazine they have fetus, they have taken something from the fetus.
I am not sure where they took it from. But I have heard now some, some scientists actually talking about. How. Previously they would do the vaccinations from like a, the dead viruses. So basically that dead virus creates the immune reaction in the body and then you become immune to the live ones. But now they are creating now just from the RNA of the virus. So like some section of the RNA they take and create the vaccines from that. And now what it's supposed to do that uh. That portion of the RNA should cause the, the, the immune cells to produce the antibodies. But there is according to the scientists, now there are some problems going to happen also. That because it's incomplete, they get stuck to the immune cell and it creates further problems in the body. And it's the first time in the history when they are doing the RNA viruses, RNA, no vaccinations. So it's not really tested. So. Who knows? Anyway. It's definitely in people in India don't take it so seriously, the whole Asia. It's, it's kind of like it's, it's okay, it's there. But people in Europe and, and America. They are very like concerned about it and fearful. And I really think that now the fear of it. It's actually now worse than the disease itself. And just how the people, the previously people who lived in, in nature. So you will be exposed now to all kind of like a bacterias, viruses. So the body naturally creates antibodies and it prevents the diseases which may come later. But with the modern lifestyle, everything is so sterile. That uh people don't come, no don't, you don't, you are not exposed. To the natural no viruses and bacterias. So and then. When, when it comes to the, they, they are exposed. The body has, is not prepared for it and the disease has much more severe effect. So it's a lifestyle. So people think that actually now all these uh. Just a perfect sterile now situation is the best for everyone. Now it's, it's not, and I've read some articles also on how it can create now some. Like a much more serious diseases including cancer. So. Nothing should be uh too. Too exaggerated. So. Yeah, it's. Anyway, we have things to do. We have uh Japa to chant. We have Bhagwa to, to read or Necto instruction to read. So let's worry about that. And others worry about something else.
Yes Maharaj.
So. We were reading then now. The first two verses. And now we come to the, the third verse. So in the first verses, it's, it's about now. What should be, how we should control our senses and what we should avoid. To not get back. In the. Uh under the control of the senses. So now in the third verse. Now we will be reading about. Which, which activities or which quality should we develop to. Get farther, no more. Or closer to understanding Krishna consciousness. So first we learn about then what to avoid. And now what actually enhances our devotion. So we were talking about six qualities uh in this verse. So then text three. There are six principles favorable to the execution of pure devotional service. One, being enthusiastic. Two, endeavoring with confidence. Three, being patient. Four, acting according to the regulative principles such as Shravanam, Kiratanam, Vishnasmaramanam. Bhagavatam seven five twenty-three. Hearing, chanting and remembering Krishna. Five, abandoning the association of non-devotees. And six, following in the footsteps of the previous archariats. These six principles undoubtedly assure the complete success of pure devotional service. So. We see. As Shabrapada mentions, actually that the six principle undoubtedly assure the complete success of pure devotional service. So. How we are talking in the realm of instructions? Before, before it was the realm of prohibitions. So prohibitions connected to never forget Krishna and instruction to always remember Krishna. So these instructions when followed, the prohibitions are automatically fulfilled. There's no need to worry about them. But if the attachments are strong and the instructions. To always remember Krishna, it's not natural yet for the Jiva due to the conditioning. Then the prohibitions to not to forget him. Then those are very important. The effort is put into, the emphasis are put into those prohibitions. But as soon as the Jiva becomes purified and the focus is on always remember Krishna. Then as Shabrapada says, that basically the, the success in devotional service is assured. So now we will be talking about the six qualities or six instructions what one should. Hence the attachment for devotional activities. Devotional service is not a matter of sentimental speculation or imaginative ecstasy. Its substance is practical activity. Shirobagoswami in his Bhaktirasamritasindhu one one eleven has defined devotional service as follows. Aniyabila shitashunyam gyanakarmari anavritam anukolina krishnanu. Shilanambakthi uttama. Chitnacharitamritam madhyam. Nineteen one sixty-seven. Utta bhakti or unlight devotion unto the supreme personality of God, Krishna. Involves the rendering of devotional service in a way that is favorable to the Lord. This devotional service should be free from any external motive and devoid of creative karma in personal jhana and all other selfish desires. Okay. Okay, right, let's continue reading. Bhakti is a sort of culmination. As soon as we say cultivation. We must refer to activity. Cultivation of spiritual, spirituality does not mean sitting down idly for meditation as some Sado yogis teach. Such idle meditation may be good for those who have no information on devotional service and for this reason. As a way to check distant distracting materialistic activities. Meditation means stopping all nonsensical activities at least for the time being. Devotional service however, not only puts an end to the nonsensical mundane activities. But also engages one in meaningful devotional activities. Shipra Maharaj recommends. Shravanam, Kiratanam, Vishnus, Smaranam, Parasevanam. Marchanam, Vananam, Dasyam, Satkam, Atmanivedanam, Bhagavatam seven five twenty-three. The nine processes of devotional service are as follows. One, hearing the name and the, and glories of the supreme personality of God. Two, chanting his glories. Three, remembering the Lord. Four, serving the Lord's feet. Worshipping the deity. Six, offering obeisance unto the Lord. Seven, acting as the Lord's servant. Eight, making friends with the Lord. Nine, surrendering oneself fully to the Lord. Shravanam or hearing is the first step in acquiring transcendental knowledge. Reception unauthorized person but should approach the proper person as recommended in Bhagavat Gita four thirty-four. Just try to learn the truth by approaching the spiritual master. Inquire from him submissively and render service unto him. The self-realized soul can impart knowledge unto you because he had seen that truth. Okay, so we talked now about the, the six favorable principles. And. we talked about the Utta Ma Bhakti. So now from now, then we will be, as we mentioned in the beginning, focused on how to perform devotional service. And to be able to, to perform devotional service, then we have to be then instructed into how to perform devotional service. So therefore, then now we are talking about the, you know, Tarvidi Pranipatena, Pariprashtana Sevaya. Those are the proper channels, proper ways. Only how one can approach spiritual master to achieve the, the topmost knowledge. Some, now in Bhagavat Gita, some actually consider this verse as the most important verse of Bhagavat Gita. Why? Because without properly understanding how to approach spiritual masters, so then we can get that the Tatvajyan. Then it's impossible. And we see it now in Bhagavat Gita, now itself. First, the dialogue between Krishna and Arjuna. So Arjuna has his own opinion and Krishna, now he's first listening, then he calls him a fool. And he explains, but Arjuna being sentimental, so first he tries to see how his point of view is right. But when Krishna explains everything, so then Arjuna realizes and he surrenders. And only when he surrenders, then he is capable of understanding of what can be done and how it should be done. So from that point, then he is able to now understand and realize what Krishna is saying. So now, for example, we see in the Vedic culture. Then we talked before about samskaras. And these samskaras done for the children. They are for the very same reason. You are trying to prepare them so then the children can absorb the Tatvajyan. If well, all the samskaras, basically they culminate in the upanayana samskara for the boy. When he, the other samskaras are the preliminaries. The upanayana, upanayana means not taking one near. So you, this is actually spiritual samskara. So after the upanayana, then only the pancharatic initiation. So he is properly connected to the parampara and he is able to absorb and realize the knowledge. So the samskaras are very important. And now it's part of the Vedic culture. And when they are done, then who benefits are the children. So we, we see here that for the, for the child or now for the person to realize the knowledge, the attitude must be right. And the samskaras, they help with that. And also these qualities, these six qualities which we are discussing, those are much easier for the children who had gone through the, the shavida samskara. So of course, the samskaras, now they constitute only portion of the development of the character of the child. But it's, it's a significant portion, major portion developed, is developed by association. So now whatever association you put the child into, it has more power. But ideally both these these influences are properly developed. So that's why Shraparva also in Bhagavat Gita, now he encourages devotees. We should, if we want our child, children to develop the divine qualities, we should perform the samskaras for them. So these are important aspects, not to be neglected. And yeah. It is far recommended in the Mundaka Open Shat. Tathvi Gyanar Tam Sagurum Evabhika Chet. To understand the transcendental signs, one must approach a bona fide spiritual master. Thus, this method of submissively receiving transcendental confidential knowledge is not merely based on mental speculation. In this regard, Chitna Charita Mritam Madhyah. Ramanda Brahmite Konabhagavan Jiva Guru Krishna Prasadhe Paj Bhakti Lata Beach. In the course of traversing the universal creation of Brahma, some fortunate soul may receive the seed of Bhakti Lata, the creeper of devotional service. This is all by the grace of Guru and Krishna. Chitna Charita Mritam Madhyah nineteen-one-fifty-one. The material world is a place of confinement for the living entities who are by nature unnamaya, pleasure-seeking. They actually want to be free from the confinement of this world of conditional happiness, but not knowing the process of liberation, they are bound to transmigrate from one species of life to another and from one planet to another. In this way, the living entities are wandering throughout the material universe. When by good fortune, one comes in contact with the pure devotee and hears from him patiently, one begins to follow the path of devotional service. Such an opportunity is offered to a person who is sincere. The International Society for Krishna Consciousness is giving such a chance to humanity at large. If, if by fortune, one takes advantage of this opportunity to engage in devotional service, the path of liberation immediately opens. So again, we are talking about association and we discussed before now taking association, giving association. And we also talk about the association, what does it mean? Association as a person, but we also associate with the person by, by, uh, reading. So Bhagavatam, reading Bhagavatam, we are associating with Shraparva, who wrote the parpa. We associate with the persons in the Bhagavatam whose stories we are reading. So hearing the story of Narana Munni, then actually now we are absorbed in the story, we also are associating with Narana Munni. Druva Maharaj, Prabha Maharaj, Parishuddha Maharaj, there are so many personalities. And as Shraparva says, Shmak Bhagavatam is not limited to the twelve kentos. So hearing the stories of devotees around the world in various ages then also has effect on our consciousness and that's also associating with the Vaishnavas. Like, I'm sure that you know the, the Dhukaram Maharaj movie. So I don't know if it's true, but I heard the, the actor who was playing Dhukaram Maharaj, after the movie, he took samyas. So he was now so much absorbed in the activities, in the personality of Dhukaram Maharaj, then he was, after that movie, then he was disinterested to continue now living the materialistic style. And now nowadays, when the actors are preparing, when they are playing the movie, then they prepare for the movie, for the, of making the movie by living actually the, or not enacting the person whom they are going to play. Sometimes months or even years now before. They are trying to live according to how he would do. So they are forcing upon themselves to change their personality. And in many cases, it creates problems, you know, later on. Cause when they are not living in that, they must be like a, no, negative person. So that also reflects in their daily lives. And sometimes it becomes permanent. So rather than associating with, with the people who are creating all these weird movies. So we rather associate with the people who are creating the nice stories now describe about the devotion activities. So that's in our, that's our choice, that's what we can do. And if we make the right choice, then we can develop here the six qualities we are going to be discussing about. Okay, one should accept this opportunity to return home back to God. Very enthusiastically, without enthusiasm, one cannot be successful. Even in the material world, one has to be very enthusiastic in his particular field of activity in order to become successful. A student, businessman, artist or anyone else who wants success in his line must be enthusiastic. Similarly, one is to be very enthusiastic in devotional service. Enthusiasm means action, but action for whom? The answer is that one should always act for Krishna, for Krishna. Krishna Dha Kila Cheshta Bhakti Rasa Maida Sindo. So yeah, we are, we started then to discuss the utsaha. Now, okay, our time has passed. Questions? We will continue with the utsaha the next week. But any questions on what we discussed today?
Yes, Maraj, Maraj, one, I also read, I don't know where, from Prapad only yesterday. I'm very surprised you, you spoke that, it was also written same, that the gist of Bhagavat Gita is the middle chapters and the middle chapter just is eight and the gist of nine chapter is four point three-four. I was very surprised to read, I read, I think yesterday only, I'm just trying to find where I read it. It was a.
Yeah, actually the conclusion of, of Gita, then Sarava Darman Parityaja, that's, that's the, that's where Gita like ends, culminates. And then Bhagavatam starts. But to get to the point, even start. Then Tarvidi Pranipatena, it's, it's absoluteness is the.
And also Maraj, that in the six qualities, three are attitudes only, you know. Three of them are attitude, you know, show how important is attitude. This is a question from Shaya Madhaji, she's saying, Hare Krishna Maharaj. Sometimes it happens that a, that a person, that a person is not enthusiastic about his work and he still becomes successful, how is this possible?
Yes, well, you are talking about material activity. So there is karma. So two people can do the same, now can, can be doing the same work, exactly the same work. But somebody now will get a lot of money and somebody, no matter what he does, will get nothing or very minimal. So there are, there are the, the karma is involved in how we now, in our activities. Of course, for a devotee, that's not really a consideration. For a devotee, then he should be living according to the Ishawasa principle. So whatever comes naturally, without over endeavoring, you take, use that, learn to live with it. And don't forget Krishna. You see, especially among the Marwaris, I have seen quite few. Now the shopkeepers, so they sit there now on the chair and they sometimes tell the people, now the, the workers what to do. And what they do the whole day, they have a book and they just write Ram, 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 Ram. No, so they know what was the most important for the, no, for their life. Example of Shraparva's father. It's, it's a previously people were very Krishna conscious in India. Now it's less, but nonetheless, we hope that with the spreading of Krishna consciousness now through Shraparva's books, it's again going to come back to the golden age. So it's, it's going to come. So what was the question?
Yes, Maraj, the same, Maraj, you answered on the karma, there are some people are not enthusiastic, but still they are successful.
All right, okay, okay. So they are not enthusiastic. But seeing spiritual, not being enthusiastic for material things, it's a benefit. But then now you have to just really be very patient and very humble and tolerant, you know, to accept what comes and don't want more. Like example, we see like Kala Vichashira. He was making from kolapata, some, you know, little bits of flowers for people to come and offer them to Ganga. And he would get one, one anna for it, very little. But no matter what, he made money that day. Then he would strictly follow the fifty percent goes for Krishna consciousness. And twenty-five percent, no. And fifty percent goes for, you know, his activities, whatever he needs to be done. But he was, his faith was absolute. He never needed kind of like it to think about how to make more like enterprise, how to make more money. And now if I create a factory which will make the plates, then I can produce much more. And then now I can get more money, now that's not his way of thinking. His way of thinking is how can I the whole day be absorbing Krishna consciousness? And just to keep the body and the soul together, so I need to do something. And that's something, it's whatever one can do. Krishna will provide. If we have the faith, Krishna will provide, it comes, whatever it's needed. And if we try to endeavor for more, then And if we try to endeavor for more, then we may get something. But if it wasn't ours to have it in the first place, then we lose it. And actually the suffering of having or getting things and losing them, it's more than not to get them. Like if you, there was a, there was a guy and he, he bought a lottery ticket. And in the newspaper, he read that he won a first prize. So I don't know, it was like maybe now million pounds, huge number. So then he started to make his plans. Okay, he will go pick up the money, buy new car, buy new house. Now he will quit his work and so many things kind of like just how he is going, how he's going to enjoy. Now, when he came to the, the company to get the prize, so they told him, sir, we are extremely sorry, but there was a printing error in the newspaper. So your ticket is not the one who is winning, sorry for that. So he was extremely upset. He hired a lawyer to try to get the company, not to pay him the prize. But yeah, he didn't, he didn't win. If he would not have the ticket, then his life still will be going on. He saw a chance of getting money. He starts thinking about how to use them, how to enjoy them. And even before getting them, he loses them and he is devastated. So the lesson from that is that we should never be overwhelmed by anything. So how, now how much we can say, how much we deserve? What is it that we need to get? As long as we can have enough time now to chant, to read, to associate with the devotees and still survive, whether it's going to be in some palace or it's going to be in some small house. Now, if you are going to be moving around in some Bentley or some Maruti, ultimately, what does it matter? So the problem is our attachments. So if we are not attached, so even with the minimum, we can be the richest people in the world. But if the attachment is to my enjoyment, no matter what money you have, you may have money like bezos or no whoever and still you will be satisfied. Still you're looking for how to multiply them. There's no satisfaction. So these people actually are poor because they don't have enough. So whatever situation we get in, in our life, just let's try to accept it and just go with it. So then we don't have to be disturbed, we can remain dear. That's actually not the, the real goal of our life. That's not to say that now we should sit down meditation and then reject everything. No, we should, whatever comes easily, take it based on the four godic principles and then just, just do it. But if it doesn't come, don't over endeavor for it. Then one can remain peaceful. That's a secret. So if somebody is getting more money, don't be envious, don't be jealous. You have, you have your own money, then live your life according to that. I know also a person, he didn't have money, but he did some good investment and he became rich. So then when he became rich, externally it looked like kind of like that he is very happy, but actually he said that it brought more anxiety for him. Before he didn't have much, so he didn't worry about it. When he became rich, then he started to worry about the money, how to invest them or somebody can come and steal something from me. So he said that he had to start sleeping with a gun under his pillow. Because what if somebody comes? So completely in anxiety. So what is the pleasure, what is the happiness of having money which costs you so much? The all these has to be considered. Yeah?
Thank you, Maharaj. These are very practical, all these verses of Noy, very practical for our day to day. Satam Maharaj.
Yeah.
The Madhaji who asked the questions, she is also saying, she beautifully answered, thank you Maharaj, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
So no more questions, Maharaj.
No more questions then. All right, so then yeah, maintain the Krishna consciousness. Now the week or two weeks of festivals will come to celebrate them. You can get together, otherwise at home. Or you can watch on Myapur, Myapur TV. This year we want to do for Nithiana Prabhu, same like we did before, he is the Adi Guru, so I should do like a vyasapuja for him.
Oh, okay Maharaj.
So there will be celebrations of Lord Nithanda before the abhishek. It was very nice festival like that. Then we stopped for some reason and I don't know why. But yeah, this year it should be again revived.
Okay Maharaj, we will definitely try to watch this. It's a weekday though, but we will try Maharaj.
So anyway, just celebrate, you can always now watch in the evening, the recording of it. You can make a feast now for your family or for guests, now whatever. Celebrate now by whatever means you have. Or just read. This Friday is adwaita acharya, then it's varada, then Nithanda. So many opportunities.
Yes, Maharaj, many opportunities.
And we should pray for the mercy of Lord Nithanda to get the mercy of Lord Chitney Maaprabhu. Here, we get the opportunity. Hare Krishna.
Thank you so very much Maharaj. So all of us would like to chant to pray and thanks Maharaj for his kindness station. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare Rama, Hare Rama.
Hari Bon.
Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, so thank you so much devotees. So forward to meet you again on Saturday. Next online session will be on Saturday. Hare Krishna.